I'll call a common council to meeting, common council meeting to order. Could we have roll call please?
Dan Kurt.
Here.
Gallups.
Here.
Here.
Bremer.
Here.
Schatzinger.
Here.
Thorson.
Here.
Split.
Here.
We have a call.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America in its very public, which is stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for the honor to pray with you tonight. Lord Jesus, we come before you with gratitude for the privilege of gathering and service to the city of Ripon. We thank you for this beautiful community, for its citizens, for the leaders who have answered the call to serve. As this council meets tonight, we ask for your guidance and wisdom. Grant each member clarity of thought, unity of spirit, the courage to lead with integrity and compassion. May their decisions reflect justice, promote peace, and uplift the lives of all who call Ripon their home. Bless our city with safety, prosperity, and a spirit of cooperation. May your hand be upon every effort to build stronger, kinder, and a more vibrant future together. We ask this in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll second. Motion by David, second by John. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. No one has signed up for a public comment tonight. We'll move into accepting informal reports from standing committee and staff. Is there a motion to approve that list as published?
I'll move to approve as published.
I'll second.
Motion by Jonathan, second by Steve. Any discussion on the reports?
Yep.
Go ahead.
I'd like to ask a few questions about the city administrator's report.
Okay.
Thank you for doing this. Do you have any comment on 112 Watson Street? Do you have any further information on the foreclosure timeline? Are you planning on doing this anytime soon?
So, in the report, it's discussed the status of the demolition work for the property and what was, will be levied as a special assessment to the property. We have inspected the property post demolition work and have paused further activity on this time as I indicate, discuss it with the county. Generally speaking, the correspondence to the county, I've communicated with the county treasurer who manages the in-rem process for the county. There was correspondence sent to them directing them of the total amount and what we were going to assess and talking about what the process is moving forward because there still needs to be, the roof leaks and there needs to be some consideration of that. But the property as it sits today, mold has been remediated. It's in what I would say way better shape than what it was a month ago. I believe nine to 10 dumpster full of mold material and building materials was removed from the property. Response I received from the county treasurer was that there was going to be a meeting today by the finance committee and that their staff would recommend a 90-day hold on the property to discuss the issue or the property with the city. My response back to that was, here's a view of the condition of the property. We have addressed the mold and remediation concerns. The idea of a 90-day hold does not make sense from the city's perspective with the outstanding leans on the property. And we requested that they move quicker on this because just the history of this property is there have been 90-day holds which have led to six-month and longer delays. So, that is where it stands. We communicated to them that we do not necessarily need that 90 days and to contact us immediately, we are willing to meet, willing to talk, and that was not responded to. So, they had a meeting today and I will follow up with the county tomorrow to see how that meeting went.
Is there anything else we could do to push this forward besides talking with them?
It is their process. You know, beyond that, you know, they have their process they go through for this that we can't necessarily push on because it's their established process and it will take time. Ultimately, if they select to put a hold on it, my response would be then let's meet immediately and get back to working on it. But it doesn't necessarily change where we're at with it, right?
Right.
We would recommend that they move forward with the process and not delay it. But again, it's their decision.
Okay. Then I have another question on the security of RFP.
Mm-hmm.
Can you tell us a bit about that, what that entails?
There'll be a full, there'll be a full report coming at the next council meeting with recommendations from vendors that we issued an RFP for multiple security cameras. For example, you know, the new DPW facility. It's a phased project. Library was included because there's camera outlets put in throughout that project that were designed in. So, we want to work with the vendor to kind of cohesively put together a security, you know, package for the city, for the police and others, whether it's at parks and other facilities just to monitor, you know, facilities and deter vandalism in the parks. So, we'll come forward with a full recommendation and budget on that at the next meeting.
And then one more thing. Any timeline for the Sandmark update? I know you mentioned about the loss there south of Sandmark.
Yeah.
Was there a timeline to move on that?
I would, I would say that the city is still in the process of evaluating the structures that exist on that 15-acre parcel and then forming a plan for that as well as dealing with some stormwater issues. Ultimately, I would just note that with six, only six lots remaining in the Sandmark property and achieving the 85% as indicated in the notice that we only have six lots left for sale in Sandmark. And, and so, we will begin, you know, looking at how that unfolds and on a timeline to continue to develop housing sites on the south side on that 15-acre parcel due to the demand that we've seen from the Sandmark program. So, as soon as possible, right? But clearly, with the installation of utilities, need to identify the final location of the well on that site because that's the main reason we bought that parcel. There will need to be planning done and that's not going to happen overnight.
Right.
So.
I'm sorry, I have my.
I don't have another report then.
Oh, okay.
Julian.
Two things. First, I want to take note of the Ripon Guardian Ambulance Monthly Report. In 2025, it indicates there's already more calls in all of 2024, so I commend all of those and our emergency personnel services. Wow. And then second, as a quick follow-up to Adam, for those people that may be listening, would you say it would be helpful or not necessary if people contacted their county representatives about the property at 112?
Again, they have their process through the in-rem that can't really be disrupted by, you know, individual county members. There's a process that they legally have to go through. Certainly, conversations with people on the finance committee, which we have had and, and, you know, previously had kind of not gone anywhere. You know, certainly it doesn't hurt, but they still have their process. So, it's, you can't jump that process or anything. So, it is what it is, sort of.
Anyone else? If there is no further discussion, all those in favor of approving informal reports from standing committee and staff, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those are approved. Next is the consent calendar. This consists of common council meetings from June 10th and June 23rd. Is there a motion to approve consent calendar as published?
So.
Second. Motion by Ellen, second by John. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar as published, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Moving on to our agenda items. Number one, pay application number two for Hamburg-Hanny reconstruction project. This is a pay application in the amount of $339,222.91 and is recommended for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the pay application number two for Hamburg and Hanny Street reconstruction.
In the total dollar amount of?
Oh, in the total dollar amount of $1 million. I'm sorry. It is $339,221.91. That's the correct.
$222.
$222.91 and I will.
$222.91. I apologize.
And I will second.
We have a motion by Doug, second by David. Any discussion? We do have Dan Rammer from RSA.
MSA.
MSA, sorry. If anyone has any questions for him?
Is there anything you want to share that's unique to the project?
Dan, do you have anything you'd like to share with us?
Not at this time. Things are going fairly well out there, kind of as expected. I guess I haven't heard of any complaints or anything like that. We're kind of having bi-weekly meetings with staff. If there are anything, we'll hopefully get those addressed. So, I guess if there is anything from the rest of the council or anything like that, I guess please let me know at any time. But as far as payment and work being completed, they seem to be on time, on schedule. So, no major updates there.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving pay application number two for the Hamburg-Hanny reconstruction project in the amount of $339,222.91, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Next, we have a change order for the St. Wenceslas Street project. Let Adam give the summary on this one.
So, as we're closing out the St. Wenceslas Street project from last year, there's been some recognized issues with stormwater coming off of East Sullivan that previously had a tie-in to a catch basin that was off of St. Wenceslas. Essentially, from how we understand it, Alan is here as well, Dan's here, we reviewed this. There is essentially water jumping onto private property and they, for lack of better description, if you, if you look at it, the road bends back toward, let's just read there, East Sullivan, right? Because it's a two-way there. It bends back and the water jumps into private property on a walkway apron and sidewalk to the house. And it is flooding and discharging debris onto private property and has nowhere to discharge into. So, this is a design flaw that was likely done when houses were tore down or there was reconditioning of something at some point in that area. We don't really know. Alan, if you have any other input on what happened, Dan?
The whole story is when East Sullivan was realigned to the present intersection, there was a swale developed, starting at a carriage walk in the curve in the road. And then that swale then conveyed water to a storm inlet in St. Wenceslas. That was not identified and we've identified a solution without, without excavating into St. Wenceslas. So, we're taking advantage of what is still right-of-way lands and, and so we, there's no easements needed or anything like that. So, it's all within right-of-way. We're adding, I can't remember how many feet of storm sewer pipe in that, what I'll call the remnant right-of-way land between East Sullivan and St. Wenceslas that will result in a yard inlet in the grass and then will convey those waters to the storm sewer in St. Wenceslas.
97 feet.
97. Thank you.
And just a reminder, to speak into your microphones, Naomi's having a little trouble hearing some people at home. Go ahead, Julian.
Can you remind us how, when there's a change order like this, what, what is the process to identify a solution and then have someone who is very familiar professionally with, with this? Not that you aren't per se, but to make sure that this is a viable, good, best option.
We consulted with the engineers at MSA in evaluating and identifying this solution.
Is this within the budget for the whole project? Part of contingency?
It's an overall change order of $12,000. We still have retainage out, you know, so there's, it's, is it above and beyond what the original contract? Yes.
Yes, but I asked about budget. I didn't ask about contract.
It's, it's about a $1.3 million project overall. By the time it all reconciles out, we'll be pretty much on target with the budget once you factor in engineering and other soft costs. So, you know, we're leveraging the old contract to get the pricing here and move this forward versus, you know, taking proposals or other things like that. So, we're just adding this on as they are going to be there as well for final closeout. So, they still have additional work to do. So, you know, it's a reasonable solution for the problem we have.
I move that we accept change order number two for the St. Wenceslas Street project in the dollar amount of $12,724.
I'll second that.
A motion by Ellen, second by Doug. Any discussion on the motion? John?
Is there a reason that we didn't catch that before or MSA didn't catch it before?
I'll come up here for Naomi's benefit. It's a, it's a very unique and, unique situation and visually you would not expect that, that this was a drainage path going across turf area. And I suppose had we been out there at an opportune time like when it was raining, we might have identified it. We simply just didn't see it. It was brought to our, it was brought to our attention by a resident after the project had been completed last fall.
So, it's actually running up onto like a handicap approach?
Yeah, there's a carriage walk that goes to, to a property right at that, that bend in East Sullivan. And what has happened over the course of time is that sediment has built up in the turf and has created a lip. And now it holds water on the carriage walk and creates, and deposits all that sediment on that, on that carriage walk instead of flowing over the, over the turf to St. Wenceslas. So, rather than recreate the same situation, we decided that the best solution was to actually get a storm sewer in that location, which is arguably what should have happened when the intersection was realigned.
Julian?
Well, I have to be careful here because I'm not, I, I do not want this to come across as, you know, accusatory. I'm always wondering, I love being in city government because I am always loving, how can we learn to be better for the future? And can, can Dan, since he's here from MSA, it seems like, I understand why it was easily missed, but also being out there seeing how rain travels, it seems like something that would be a part of a process that MSA, I don't know, would consider as an engineer, or am I wrong?
So, I would just say too, that the history of this property, right, none of us were involved when the property was realigned, right, in East Sullivan. Those previous administrations, previous DPWs, previous engineers, right? None of us worked on it. This is one of the most unique, strangest paths taken to discharge water using somebody's walkway, right? It's not, it was not an ideal situation to begin with. So, while this is a change order and it wasn't identified in the original, this would have been the solution we would have put in the original project. Or had it been designed correctly from the goal, or when this was last done, we wouldn't have dealt with it and we would have visually seen it much more easily. It's literally jumping over somebody's walkway and hasn't been maintained. So, you know, this gets rid of that issue and better distributes the water into the system quicker and feeds into the appropriately sized system that we just put in. So, you know, this happens, right? We don't always have the best records. We don't, you know, as we build out systems and we put in plans, we put in these things in the GIS system. So, we look at what we did as a project and say, hey, remember we added this? And the next person 10 years from now says, hey, remember? Look at, you know, whatever, right? So, this happens. It's, it's, it's not great, right, at times, but this is what happens when we cobble things together over decades, right? Or put things, you know.
Thanks.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but the water that we're trying to now drain is coming from East Sullivan, not from St. Wenceslas.
Correct, correct.
Or using the St. Wenceslas drainage to fix this problem.
Correct, correct. The, from the research that I did, we have, we have no plans in-house of the intersection being redone. So, we, I don't know if that was a city project or a school project. I don't know who the design team was. I've reached out to MSA. They, they have no records of the project. So, we had nothing in-house to identify that this existed.
As a former retired county administrator, this is a much preferable way to address this issue. Nothing made me more nervous than when I would get a call from the highway commissioner saying, we're engineering something out in the field. Because, and it would be raining. So, I would get nervous about engineering stuff out in the field. So, this I'm very comfortable with because the professionals have looked at it. You've identified the problem and it will be engineered based on not a feeling.
Correct. Any further discussion on this topic? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving change order number two for St. Wenceslas Street project in the amount of $12,724, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved.
Thanks, Dan.
All right. Moving on to our next item, which is outdoor open container entertainment event permit application. This is for Ripon Main Street, Inc., for July 19th, 2025, for the summertime sip and stroll to be held on the 100, 200, and 300 blocks of Watson Street. I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by John, second by Jonathan. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the outdoor open container entertainment event permit application, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That is approved. All right. Moving to our next item, a memorandum of understanding between City Ripon and, I believe it's Ripon Main Street, for the downtown digital kiosks. Adam?
So, Craig was unable to attend tonight. He had a prior commitment. Lydia is here from the chamber. She can, she, well, if there's any questions, from a Main Street perspective. So, so essentially, Craig and I have been working on revamping the downtown streetscape over the past couple of years. We started with, you know, new benches and new flower pots and all that stuff. Moved to poles. Thank you, Alan and DPW for putting those in even a couple of years ago. Thank you.
Oh.
Yeah. And now the next phase is the directory boards that are just static posters and are out of date. And as we've looked at other communities in Wisconsin and through Main Street, the idea of digital kiosks have become more popular. So, the past couple of years, we've put dollars in the budget to try to assist with that project. Craig was working to find solutions, was kind of getting the dead ends. We reached out to three companies, Live Promo, EDC, and ROV IQ to get pricing. And generally speaking, they're all similarly priced. The technology is similar but different. And we feel that this is a more modern professional way to promote downtown, promote the community through a kiosk that allows for events, activities, directories, you know, just a ton of information that will be on a touchscreen at a location in the downtown. There's a preferred location, but generally speaking, it being one of the two locations where there is a current
where there is a current directory, right? So we've got these three. We've reviewed them all. The Alive Promo out of Minneapolis, Minnesota area was the preferred vendor at $24,950. There'll be a cost to install as well, but we have the electrical there. You know, so it's it's most of the pieces are in place. And the MOU essentially discusses ownership and maintenance and acquisition. So this would be split 50/50 by Main Street and the city. Main Street will manage the content. It will be a shared cost for maintenance and expenses annually. We'd only do one. It'd be one-sided. And the recommendation, if we decide to proceed, would be to approve the MOU with the acquisition of the Alive Promo kiosk.
I have a quick question. It looks like the preferred place to put it right now is on the green space by Sol Patina. Is there any plan to put a second kiosk in on the end of the 300 block in the future? Because I see a lot of people coming out down from Ripon College and using the signage that's there now. It's it's used quite a bit. So and I'm not asking to move your recommendation. I'm just asking if perhaps we could seek budget for a second electronic kiosk in the next maybe year or two.
So, yeah, so we originally wanted to do two. The one you're discussing, the the area in which you're looking at it, there are some site improvements that have to be made, but generally that one wasn't preferred because of proximity to the actual Main Street building and the potential that they host something over there or they do something where people can go into the facility and talk to people, right, and do that. So it's proximity to that, maybe not ideal, but ultimately there's that. And the orientation of it, the panel would face the sun right there. You'd have to move it.
Oh, the west.
And and you do not want the panel just being beat on directly by the sun. The other thing is, is I believe all information and touches and downloads and things get tracked. So if I'm understanding correctly, the software, anytime somebody touches it, they go through things, it tracks that data. So if we see, you know, that there's a lot of usage of this and it makes sense to expand this this program, we can do that. But this was preferred just based on, you know, the overall layout and what would need to be at the site and, you know, being kind of more located and visual as people come to that intersection there because it is pretty busy there on that, what, five corners or five, you know, whatever, intersection? Five?
Four and a half.
Six, four and a half.
Depends on how far away you go. So I see in the MOU that Main Street would be accepting the responsibility for the monthly internet connection, cellular data services, or content content maintenance. And I just wanted to point out that it looks like from the quote, that would be like $95 per month for the connectivity and then $139 per month for the like content management portion of it. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So just wanted to point out that that ongoing cost is going to be assumed by Main Street under this memorandum.
And we'd insure it and all that too. So we have a cost kind of that's the justification of it all. But yes, the only other thing would be is if we can get a better deal on cellular than what they can to put something connected. The alternative is we wire hardwire, which is ideal, but then you're paying that monthly fee as well. So you got to connect to it. Cellular is the next best option to hardwire.
Steve?
I just noticed that on the maintenance that or on the warranty, there's there's no warranty on these signs. So the city's going to be, I'm assuming, the person that would be taking care of anything that happens, say it shorts out or whatever? Is that what's happening here? Or if there's any vandalism, is the city going to pay for that too?
Yeah, I mean, so it will be insured and there is a warranty. I believe the warranty is like three years on this unit. Usually the units last anywhere from five to 10 years, right? That's that's general life of the screen. You can put a new screen in, so there will be ongoing maintenance over time that we will cost share with Main Street. In the event somebody runs it over with a vehicle, right? We have insurance. We do a claim. The city covers that and replaces it, right? You know, that's the idea. So if somebody, you know, vandalizes it, yep, we'll have to work with Main Street to correct that. There's ongoing maintenance that's needed beyond, you know, replacement of parts, certainly. We'll have to work with Main Street on that. Generally speaking, doing an MOU for this type of stuff hasn't really happened. We just sort of let people put stuff in the right of way and then who takes care of it? So I hope this is a step in the right direction toward understanding who's responsible for what. But yes, there will be ongoing maintenance costs if there are issues. But again, they're shared.
David?
The problem I have with this thing is we're supposed to be an early 1900s downtown. And now we're going to put some thing up like this that everybody has one of these. If we have a good website, put a couple of signs in stores, you can get all your information right here. And I think it's going to take away from the look of downtown to put some shiny box of a modern thing that I don't even see why it would be needed when everybody's got a cellphone. This looks like something you'd do in the 80s or 90s if you want to if you have a modern new city back then to try to show, hey, this is what we have here. We're trying to do something where we look like we're in the early 1900s. To me, this takes away from it and it's an unnecessary expense.
My response to that would be, we currently have two worn-out shiny boxes, one at each end of the downtown, which provide similar information, but in nowhere near as thorough a manner and not updated nearly enough. So having this shiny box replacing a worn-out shiny box, I think, is a step in the right direction. As far as people having the cellphones, that is true. However, walking through a mall or an airport, just the sheer number of people that go up to screens like this just because they're fun to get information as opposed to using their phone is incredible. Lines forming behind those, especially like in airports.
You got a mass of people in an airport. You have it's too easy to look. You're in a hurry to start with. You want to find your flight. That's not what we're doing here. It doesn't serve the same purpose. The purpose is for people to take a leisurely stroll down an old downtown, not look at something that would be have its place in an airport. I just don't think it has a place downtown.
I feel it is possible to have a historic old downtown with modern amenities and not upset the apple cart.
I just see this being as a little too much for too little.
Julie?
Yeah, I respect that opinion. And I think that I'm glad that we have people looking at what are the aesthetics of it. And yet I also think it is important that we do modernize so that our historic downtown and sort of our homegrown local businesses can stay viable. Because if they're not, we could get, you know, the canned stores that, you know, are not what make a historic district. So I love thinking about how it can be appropriate fit in, but I would offer a different opinion saying that I think this is absolutely something we should be looking at in order to keep the look of our historic downtown. And I do like that it says that there will be a historic district sign on it. So we're recognizing, we understand the uniqueness of this placement. And maybe, I mean, I don't want to overstep and, you know, be nitpicky, but I wonder if, you know, we could add something like, the last thing we want is like a flashing, you know, sale, not that would be sale or look here, look here. I know Craig and I don't think he would do that, but I guess to your point of something that would be out of place.
Yes.
It might be worth.
So I'll just add two things. First is Main Street met, reviewed all this and have pledged support of it, the Main Street Board. They have said, we want to proceed with the city on this project at their last meeting. The second thing is, is we're already doing some of this too, right? There are signs that go in the sidewalk that promote concerts and things like that. So there's already things that are going to that look like this that are out there that this will replace, right? You see the signs saying, here's the concert series for the for the summer, right? This can be a board that's there out of the, you know, sidewalk or out of the area that isn't used for that anymore. So it'll help promote things. There's also capabilities to promote the idea of historic downtowns and providing information and links directly to people on the board to better promote and interact with people, to educate them instead of going from place to place and doing the QR code, right, on signs from buildings, right? That was a project that was started and we have, we can try to link those things and put them on the board and better promote, you know, that message as well. Or just promote, hey, look at there are QR codes on buildings that you can do this fun thing too, right? So there's there's ways to cross-promote and get information in front of people that we currently, you know, may be missing, so.
Can I just add in my time? I do talk with a lot of people that move to the area, whether they're coming to the college or, you know, again, moving resettling here. And I am surprised by the number of people that are not utilizing Facebook. This is where so often in the community, it feels like things are advertised and maybe they don't yet know about our wonderful local paper, for example, of events. And so I can't tell you how many times I hear people saying, where do I go to find this? And so I actually think this is essential to help us welcome people and to say, hey, this is a place that you want to put your roots down here. So I'm really happy to see this. And I also want to echo Ellen's sentiment of thinking about something more at that area that she talked about, in fact, where this picture is. I understand, Adam, you provided good insight as to why that's not the first place. But I will say it's seemingly like that area could have an opportunity to entice people to go downtown, whereas where we're talking about now, I feel like people have already decided to go downtown.
And I want to also address what David said, and there's a lot of value to it, but right now, and Lydia's here, she can confirm this, we have people coming into the Little White Schoolhouse who think it's spectrum cable because that's what the internet says. So the internet many times is lagging behind what's actually happening. And well, it's right, Lydia? Yeah. So and then Brian explains, no, this is a museum. We're not the cable company. But I think Craig is really good at keeping things up to date and it would help people. Sometimes you have a revolving door of business, small businesses downtown, and it's an easier way to update because many times the schoolhouse has been there for, well, what, a year? A year? Because Google still thinks it's spectrum cable.
Almost two years.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. Okay. Jonathan?
So even though Main Street is going to be maintaining it, we're paying half. So they will advertise other broader Ripon events, not just Main Street events?
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of a collaboration between Main Street Chamber, its position down there, but they'll have like the calendar of events. So if there's, you know, events going on throughout the entire community, you know, they'll put on more than just that. It'll it'll be a broader than just downtown. Obviously, we're not doing advertisements. We're not selling advertisements just because that can get to be really not so fun. And so you can generate income off of it if we didn't do that, but ultimately, that's not preferred. It's really meant to showcase the things that are happening within the community as well as the city to use it. If we have information that we need to get out, we can also, you know, work with Craig to publish something on the kiosk as well.
John?
I respect what Dave said about the looks of it. And sometimes we have to get modernized with our downtown. But I really think from historic preservation, looking at that way, I think we have a good chance to do the history of every building. We can punch in 211 Watson and it would start with day one and it was a meat market and and things like that. So I think I'm excited about doing it. And I think if we work with Craig on it, we can we can do a lot of things with it if it's capable of doing things like that, which I think it is.
I'm, you know, these things are evolving quickly, right? While they're popular in airports and big cities, you know, we found this in Jefferson, Wisconsin. They they put one up. There's this far more costing. We could make it more ornate and historic looking. That was in original conversation. But then you're doubling the cost because you have to build a cabinet. And so we tried to get something that's on budget that, you know, we weren't coming in saying we need $50,000 for a fancy touchscreen. Ultimately, it will evolve. The technology has evolved quicker than all of us understand. You know, we've done demos of these things. They're pretty incredible. I mean, you can, you know, have a map and download somebody's menu, right, for the restaurant. So somebody can just look at the menus. So they're like, hey, I want to go eat there. Or, you know, you can play games on some of them, right? Like they they have apps like a phone where you can play games, shoot baskets, right? That's not what we're doing this board, but but if it can do that, I hope that it can do what you say and we can build in that that function and promote the historic, you know, buildings and information and education as well. It's already built online as well on websites and things. So it's already all there, right? It's already it's already somewhere. So we've got to link it to this machine.
Okay.
Hey, I just wanted to highlight that the MOU has a line in number two that says the kiosk will not be used for advertising sales or paid commercial content, just to point out the, you know, anti-flashing, which, yeah, is completely a concern, but also that it specifically calls out designed to promote local event and activities. And a searchable business directory, as was kind of talked about a couple of times, is huge for these small businesses that otherwise, you know, they're not necessarily going to be able to have a large sign out like Canute has or, you know, or there may be a B side of a building or a smaller, you know, unit within the larger building. You can search it and see it. I do have a question maybe, which is, or I do have a question, which is if, you know, in a couple of years, we decide we get a different unit or something, is it feasible or could we ask about moving this unit into a different area? And then, you know, if it seems like it is a better location or a better location is identified, you know, is that?
I think so. I mean, it's not it's not dissimilar to the existing cabinets out there today where you see ready, they're put in ground. I think they're I think they're movable, you know, that they they don't, you'll have to do some concrete work or whatever, but ultimately, I believe they can be relocated if there is an issue with this one, so.
John?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding for the downtown digital kiosk.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Alan. Steve?
My last question is, if there's a company downtown that's not a member of Main Street, I don't know how many that are not, are they still going to be able to utilize that information sign?
The businesses that are in the bid district have no choice to be in Main Street? They are in Main Street.
But if they don't want to be?
They are in.
Are they eliminated?
By tax levy, they are in Main Street.
Okay, whether you like it or not. Okay. Well, I was just curious about that.
It's they're not necessarily members of the chamber, but part of Main Street they are. They contribute to Main Street. And just this is probably a question for Craig, but I assume the business directory could be a citywide business directory?
Yeah, I think that's the intention is to not just have this focused on purely downtown. They have information out there. So if somebody is, you know, coming through town and they want a breakfast place and there's more than just breakfast places downtown, right? So advertise.
And one nice thing about the digital boards, not limited to a 24 by 36 sheet of paper for your map, you can have it zoom in and out, different sets. for your map, you can have it zoom in and out, different sections of town. Any further discussion on this item? And just to remind me, the motion was to approve the memorandum of understanding and proceed with the acquisition of the board?
Yes.
Thank you.
From Alive Promo, as we do with a bid, be specific.
Yes, that company.
Yeah, you mentioned that, I was just clarifying.
Are you per second?
No, it's seconded.
Okay.
I was just clarifying.
Yep.
Everything within the motion. Any further discussion? If there is no more discussion, all those in favor approving the memorandum of understanding for the downtown digital kiosk, and the procedure with the acquisition from Alive Promo Inc. for $24,950, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
That is approved. All right, moving on to our last agenda item, sidewalk removal and replacement proposal. Ellen, do you want to start this one off?
Okay, every year, we do a sidewalk improvement program. This year, we're doing an area bounded by West Oshkosh, Eureka, Sunset, and Hamburg, I believe it is. And then we have sporadic areas throughout the community where complaints or resident inquiries brought tripping hazards to our attention and asked to be put on the program, so. After packaging it up, we solicited quotes from four contractors, three responded. The results are in your packet. Beardsley Concrete, who has done our work several years, was the low bid for the removal and replacement. For the quantities bid, he came in at $46,058. The next closest quote for the same amount was just under $51,000. So, staff is recommending to award this work to Beardsley Concrete.
And just for clarification, this is just the replacement section, separate from the Safe Step grinding?
Correct.
Doug?
I have a question. Why is it that some of the concrete is four inches and some are six?
Ooh, I can answer that one. Sidewalks that are on driveway approaches are required to be six inches.
Correct, that's for vehicle travel, where it's going to be subjected to vehicle weight.
Okay, thank you.
Ellen?
I move that we accept the recommendation for our staff for sidewalk removal and replacement by Beardsley Contract LLC in the amount of $46,058.
I'll second. Motion by Ellen, seconded by John. Jolene?
Well, my, just a quick question for the company is, you know, we had talked about, I had identified an area where the, where you, you know, walk off from a sidewalk or a street, in the area that has the degraded area, how it seems like a company, to not be, just to be direct, made it uglier than other areas, but, you know, I know you had looked into it, and you would say, "This is meeting code." But my question then for a company, are they, do we need to make a statement that we, we want to stay, obviously, within the budget now, but if they think that we're not looking at this, they're going to go with the cheapest possible way? Or do we need to say, "Okay, here's, here's what we expect"?
In an email, I had sent to all the contractors what would be acceptable for the detectable warning field, and it's the same spec that we use for our road projects.
Thank you.
Yeah, just had a question. With the replacement and removal seeming to kind of come in a little bit, well, as a significant portion of what we've budgeted, and then the cutting and grinding costs adding on top of that, is it going to be needed to add in more money in the budget moving forward, or do we just have a little bit more replacement and repair throughout this portion of the city? Kind of a general question.
I will be able to utilize the funds that exist within the, within the budget, so I do not anticipate coming to the council to ask for more money.
Okay, what about any, I know it'd be a guess, but do we think, or are we looking at next year for that?
Given that the prices came in pretty much the same, what drove this year's up is we have a lot of crosswalks that need to be done, and because they're four feet in width, and ADA requirements are five feet in width, that's what drove this year's up.
Okay, so that, because we're in a very residential area with a lot of sidewalk for this year's section of the city, we expected costs to be higher.
I'd actually picked this area because I didn't think it was going to be this high, and I was a little surprised.
Thank you.
Every year, we analyze it and look at how much we think we can get done, we use the previous year as a basis. Obviously, there's more sidewalk that needs to be improved than what we are addressing. We can always push more money toward that. It is a split, 50/50 with the property owner, so while we do direct assess for a portion of it, we have another portion to bring forward. We are and have increased the amount we spend just about annually, right? We're about, I think, double of what we were spending a couple of years ago, so we're trying to find more funds to more aggressively attack some of the sidewalk issues. But certainly, we could spend, quadruple this, and, but obviously, there are competing interests within the budget.
Do you have a question about the quote comparison sheet? The estimated quantities, is that cubic feet?
I'm sorry, square feet.
Square feet.
Square feet. And is this for the full, or is this half? Is this...
This is the full price.
Full, and then we'll assess?
Right, and so procedurally...
We get some of this money back?
Right, procedurally, what we, what we have employed, starting last year, is rather than trying to get invoices out and paid before our specials are due to the county for the tax bill, we have just come right out and say, "You're going to get a notice in October, here's what, here's what you're going to be billed on your tax bill, do not make payment now." And then that gives the resident or property owner the ability to make a decision, do they pay by December 31st, or by January 31st of the following year?
That's the process.
Yep.
And they've been given notice of the slap?
Yes.
So, they, they're marked, and they give them the opportunity to do it themselves?
Yep. I've met with a couple of people as a result of the letters that went out, and actually just had a voicemail today, checked it before it came to the, came to the meeting tonight, so that person actually wants to add on to what is being done.
Jolene?
So, that's neat to know, so a homeowner, if they're in this area, they could request to add on, is what you're saying?
Correct, if they feel, because we try to make judgment calls in favor of the property owner. We try to be very conservative with these calls, but some property owners take pride, take more pride, and they, they want a pristine look, so I'll look at it, and if it is a tripping hazard, then we'll mark it, and we'll add it to the program.
That's fantastic, so two things, one is, when do they have to have that request in mind? Would you like that?
I'd have to look at the letter, I think it was by the end of this month.
Okay, and then second of all, because I know I have a constituent that would ask, if they want to fix it themselves, now they've been notified in this area, they could do that, but it has to be up to the standards?
Correct, correct, and I do have one resident that's doing that.
Mark?
Actually, was just reminded of, it's not my district over there, but I know someone that lives in this area, and they were wondering, in the letter, it describes which sections are needing replacement, but kind of seeing which one was exactly the one that was being described was maybe a little bit difficult, and I was just wondering, how is it marked? So, we know how Safe Step goes, and marks it?
The letter is purposeful to encourage dialogue with the office.
Okay.
So, they're told that they're marked, they're marked with a blue pen. Unfortunately, it's not always consistent as to whether they mark it with an ID number, or sometime, like last year, if it was going to be replaced, they put a big R on it. And so, not knowing what their philosophy was, I just said that it's been marked, if you have any questions, call us. Here's the estimated cost between removal and, removal, replacement, and saw cutting. And if they want more information, they can call us, and we'll walk them through it.
Go on. Hearing none? All those in favor of accepting the proposal from Beersley Concrete LLC in the amount of 4, or $46,058 for sidewalk replacement, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. All right, next up is project updates and staff reports. We'll start here today.
You have my report, I heard you talked a lot about it. The only other thing to note, it'd be Southridge Park Project is currently out to bid, so later this month, we will have review of that, as well as then the security RFP, so there'll be a couple of things coming later on in July, and then library renovation project has started. Just a shout out to the library staff for working to clear out one of the sections, and volunteers helping to do that. And then, in the audience tonight, is Nancy Bell, the new library director, so.
All right, thank you. With that, Nancy, if you'd like to step forward and introduce yourself to the council.
Hello, I'll just keep it pretty short and sweet, I'll do a real quick recap of who I am and why I'm here. So, I started my library career over 10 years ago, in a community about this size. My hometown is Antioch, Illinois, so it's, it used to be about 8,000 people, and now it's 16,000, back when I started living there. So, I started as a library page, and I've worked at just about every step of the way in library service. So, page, circulation clerk, circulation assistant, reference assistant, readers advisory librarian, director at Shawna County Library for two years, and then now I'm here at Ripon. I've worked at libraries of all sizes, starting at my hometown library with 8,000, and then I worked at Milwaukee Public Library for five years, so that would be 600,000, and then up to Oshkosh of 60,000, and then Shawna County had six locations for a service population of 41,000. However, each community within the Shawna County library system, six libraries in that one library, the smallest community of which was 500 people. So, I'm very familiar with how each community is unique, and has citizens and needs that are unique to that community, and I'm just really excited to jump in and invest my time and energy into building a great community here in Ripon. So, I'm so excited to get to know all of you, and all of our lovely library staff who've already been working hard at the renovation. We mentioned it, they actually got an estimate for all of the moving that they did, and they saved about $17,000 in doing it in-house. So, I really commend all the library staff for all of the hard work that they've already done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Jolene?
Can I say, also, welcome, and without, you know, putting you on the spot too much, can you say, basically, why, what is your interest in working in a library, and how do you see it being an essential part of a community?
Absolutely, so, I grew up in a military household, so I was a military brat, moved around five or six times before I was seven, finally landed in Antioch, Illinois. The first place we always went every time we moved was the library, to get a feel for the community, get resources we needed, you know, really make that place our home for the two years that we were there, right? So, I personally have a lot of history in libraries, and, you know, what it's already done for our family. I mean, my parents were the first, both of them were the first people in their families to go to college and get an education that way, and a lot of that is attributed to libraries. So, so much of that is giving back to the community, being that source of higher education, lifelong learning is so important. So, that's really my deep-set, personal story about libraries.
Thanks so much.
And, yeah, I just, I love them, and I love what we can do for the community through them. Awesome.
Thank you.
All right. I hope to see you in the library.
All right, anything for PD? How it works? Anything else for us?
Just give you a quick update on the new DPW building. Last week, the garage floor for the water department was poured, and as of tonight, it appears about three-fourths of the repaired garage has been poured. Interior office, the finished surfaces are starting to be installed, so things are going to turn fairly quickly here. In fact, I remember a number of you had asked for a tour. I'm off this week, but if you want to reach out to me next week, I'll be happy to, you know, tour you through the building, all right?
Thank you.
I'm at notes, I mean, is it possible that maybe, Adam, could you send out, like, if there's a time that others are going, maybe we want to set up, if others are available, not that it's mandatory, or just, you think it's individual, we should just do it?
Probably individual to avoid any quorum issues.
Oh, that's true, all right.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Naomi, do you have anything for us tonight?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, just want to remind everyone, it's summer, it's hot, it's humid, make sure when you're enjoying the outside to stay hydrated and keep yourself safe. Keep an eye on the weather, we've had a lot of rain lately. Any future agenda items or comments from council? Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second it.
Motion by Doug, seconded by Jolene. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 8:04, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.